Are you able to hear me? Okay. So to start off with attendance, I will start off with Chair Anaya. Vice Chair Lane.
President Thalia, thank you.
Commissioner Aguipe. Mayor Osberry. Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Brutus. Commissioner Caliento.
Present.
Commissioner Cooley. Ex-official Peter Kritikos. Commissioner Di Laurentis.
Present.
Commissioner Dubois, I believe, had an excused absence. So Commissioner Espinoza. Commissioner Flores. Down. Um.
I believe she's on, if we could just mark her, I see her on here.
Yeah, okay. Um. Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Guajardo.
Present.
Um. Alder Person Haring. Superintendent Killen.
Here, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Miles. Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Reimer. Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Sizer. Commissioner Thomas. Yep, she's present as well. Um. And Commissioner Yonin.
Present.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you Thalia, so we'll keep an eye as other members join, I know that a few folks um were gonna be out of town and could not join us today, but we'll continue with the agenda and the presentation. Um, we will begin with public testimony, Thalia, did we have any registered speakers or any public testimony that was submitted to us?
No, we did not have any public testimony submitted.
Thank you, um, we will begin by tabling the minutes for July and August until we're able to fully establish quorum, I believe we're missing about two or three individuals so that we have quorum, so we'll see if folks can join us and we can establish that. Um, I do not have any updates on my end, so I will hand it over to our Vice Chair Elaine to guide us into the presentation for today's meeting.
Thank you, Chair, we very much appreciate that, this is a a very provocative, interesting and disruptive presentation we're about to hear and in my mind, there are fewer compliments higher than disruptive. So I am really thrilled to introduce two speakers, at least one of whom I think may be familiar to many or most of you, and that is Amea Pahuar, who was an alderman in the city of Chicago and now is Senior Advisor to the First Midwest Group. And the other is Paul Williams, who is the founder and Executive Director of the Center for Public Enterprise. I've always described the Commission in many ways, but among those ways is as a convener, a collaborator, and a catalyst. And I think you'll find that the recommendations that you'll be hearing today fall neatly within that same description. What they have taken note of, and you may have seen they've written about this subject extensively in a variety of public publications that have come to all of our attention, is that Cook County, which owns and operates one of the largest healthcare systems in the nation, might bring the same successful model to grocery stores, pharmacies, banking, housing, energy, and other economic sectors, the idea is to fill market gaps for the public good. So rather than stealing their thunder, let's let them present their actionable policy recommendations around the notion of creating a county industrial policy that does those very things, and so I believe, Amea, you would like to be authorized to take charge as a, in order to advance your own slides, am I right?
That would be helpful, thank you.
So Thalia, if you kindly accommodates that, I'm very eager to hear what our witnesses have to say.
Okay, I have. Just give me one sec. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, let me just slideshow, okay. So um. I just wanna, let me first thank Chair Anaya, Vice Chair Lane, and all the Commissioners for giving me an opportunity to speak today and present some ideas around public options, which, you know, in many quarters are seen as very radical public policy solutions. I see them as very pragmatic, primarily because a lot of the entrenched and systemic and persistent problems that are facing our county or city or state in our country result from our, from policymakers kind of deferring to the markets, right? Is that we give market actors something and then we take sort of a passive posture and hope that the market does right by us. And I think instead what we should be doing is, that's fine, those tools are great, but we should actively participate in in the same way that Cook County Hospital fills a major gap by serving a hundred and twenty thousand plus people every single year, serving low-income patients. In addition, providing critical care that the private hospital system couldn't do. So it is the example of what could we, what we could do in other sectors to solve our most persistent problems. This isn't anything new, the state just passed their Clean Energy Jobs Act, which is an example of kind of bringing together all of our available tools to address climate change. California is about to start producing insulin because they're not gonna wait for pharma to do right by people, they're just gonna do it themselves. So really grateful to be here, and I'll just kick things off. One of the things that, when I talked about those persistent entrenched problems, is that, right, the Cook County short a hundred and fifty-nine thousand affordable units nationally, communities are short seven million units. Fifty-eight percent of people in Illinois live in childcare deserts, which means that there aren't enough slots available to children in communities by census tract. Twenty-five percent of Cook County residents lack high-speed internet, forty-three percent of all those that are unconnected in Illinois live in Cook County. And, you know, seven hundred and sixty thousand people are in Cook County are food insecure, and thirty percent of Cook County residents are bank, underbanked or unbanked. The thing here, all of these things when combined, a lot of these deserts overlap. It's not just, you know, there's one here, there's another one there. When you live in a food desert, there's a chance you live in a banking desert and you live in a childcare desert. A lot of that is because when you have systemic disinvestment, it drives systemic public and private disinvestment. Over again, it's a perpetuating cycle. And so it becomes expensive to be poor. It costs more to be poor. And so when you think about these problems, and then you think about the tools that states and cities have, they can never work on scale, they only work on the margins, so for instance, you know, for banking, we have lots of organizations pushing financial inclusion through financial literacy. Where, you know, sometimes I feel like the organizations need financial literacy because they don't know actually what it's like being banked, or to spend more annually on check cashing services or on payday loans than you do on food. Another example is the Tax Increment Finance Program. You know, I was, I worked on it when I was a member of the City Council. It works where property values go up, it does not work where property values don't go up. And it designed flawed. I can go up and ask, but the point with these tools is that they are well-intentioned, there are good organizations working on these tools. Low-income housing tax credits, for example, is a tool, but it can never deliver the units that we need, and I'll talk more about that in just a second. So this is not to disparage the organizations who work in this space, it's really just to say, are we really trying to solve the problem, or are we gonna continue nibbling around the margins? And I think generally, those list of tools that you saw come from a specific ideology, which is the market can solve all problems, right? So whenever we have a food desert or there isn't enough internet service in a community, we try to go to the corporations that do this work and shower them with subsidies within ways, regulatory relief, and fine, it works, sometimes, you know, kind of prod and nudge them. But these are usually one-offs. Right, and so the problem over time is that systemic problems require systemic solutions, and I think the Whole Foods in Englewood is a perfect example. And full disclosure, I voted on that Whole Foods TIF subsidy back in twenty at the time, the CEO, Walter Robb, was someone who was dedicated to serving communities that were food deserts. By the time the store opened, that CEO was gone. A year later, Amazon purchased Whole Foods and the entire corporate philosophy changed. And so the question that we have to ask ourselves is, if our solution to exclusion or disinvestment is to shower incentives, what happens when the market changes? We're kind of always in this reactive laid-back posture rather than being actively involved in the markets. And so one of the things that I think are, that can be really powerful, is industrial policy. So in short, it sounds complicated, it's really not, it's not new, lots of countries engage industrial policy, including Germany, Germany, Japan, India, China, and the US in many ways engaged industrial policy in the past as well. And what it is, is that it creates a toolkit for government, right? So it's not just tax policy or incentives or public purchasing power, it's investing in research, but also standing up public enterprises. And so those tools that I talked about just a couple of slides, I said they could only work on the margins, financial inclusion, low-income housing, those tools don't have to go away. What's missing in our approach is taking these tools and putting them in one toolbox as part of a strategy to solve problems. But what's also missing in that toolbox is our reticence in over many decades to look at public enterprises and launch them. So, you know, there's some really great examples of industrial policy. And I think the one I really want to touch on quickly from historical perspective is the Reconstruction Finance Corporation. It was a, in many ways, a national public bank that President Roosevelt inherited when and one of the problems that Roosevelt saw was that ninety percent of farms in the United States were lacking any access to electricity. And so the Reconstruction Finance Corporation said, you know, they provided capital to the Rural Electrification Administration, who then went out and built power lines and electrified almost ninety percent of all farms that were, did that lacked access to power. That's important because the power companies at that time didn't want to build the infrastructure. Their logic was, why would I put up power lines and spend all this money to electrify farms that are really far apart? When we could just stick to what we have and we have and make money that way. But obviously Roosevelt and the government thought better and thought that there is an economic value to building power lines, they created jobs, electrified farms such that they needed appliances, and then the second thing that the RFC, the Reconstruction Finance Corporation, did is they said, okay, we're gonna electrify farms, but now people need money and help to buy appliances. So the, this bank financed appliances for farmers, so they could buy stoves and refrigerators. So my point in saying all this is that it uses, use incentives, public finance, a public enterprise to not only stimulate supply and create supply, but simultaneously create demand. And this, there is nothing communist or socialist or whatever, this is pure capitalism. It is just government playing an active role in solving for social problems. So when we think about Cook County, the question is, you know, should we just wait for the private sector to address all of the deserts? And I guess we should ask ourselves at the same time, what if Cook County launched other public enterprises in addition to Cook County Health? And public enterprises are nothing new, right? Our airports are owned by the public, O'Hare and Midway, two incredibly complicated enterprises that sit at the center of global commerce. We have water systems that are owned publicly, municipal broadband systems, you have two banks in this nation that are owned at the local level by consumers, and of course, there's Cook County Health. There's publicly-owned grocery and liquor stores around the country, and libraries are another form of a public option, two bookstores, right? You don't, I know Amazon changed the bookstore world, but, you know, it's not like libraries compete with bookstores, they're to offer two different services. And given that we're in Chicago, or I'm in Chicago at least, the Green Bay Packers are one of the best public options I can think of, because it is a team that is not owned by a corporation, it's owned by the people in Green Bay, and they control it together. They don't get dividends or profits back, but this public option has won more championships than the Bears, and so it's an example that public ownership in a private marketplace doesn't lead to poor results. So what are, what are some public options you can stand up? So I think banking is one place that I think is really important, right? Because you can't participate in capitalism without access to capital. And the surest way to create wealth is through a bank loan. Yet vast lots of Chicago and Cook County lack access to any banking. Black and Hispanic home buyers are turned down two times as much as white applicants. And the thing that we know is, when communities are denied systematic access to bank loans for businesses and homes, those same communities have lower property values, lower tax revenues, less household wealth, and private disinvestment, and public disinvestment, so the question we have to ask ourselves is, if we don't allow banks to serve everyone equally, then, or guarantee that they serve everyone equally, shouldn't we have a public option? And does it make sense that when you deny people access to banking, that we force them into currency exchanges and payday lenders, where again, many people who rely on these services spend more annually on interest and fees to cash their checks than they do on food? So, you know, we have systematic wealth stripping that's happening in communities, so I think a public bank option is one place that the county can begin. Public banks are not new. Half the world's banks are publicly owned, about forty-six trillion dollars in assets. They're also not a panacea, so they're not perfect. The Bank of North Dakota and the Bank of American Samoa are two really great examples. The Bank of North Dakota is a publicly-owned bank by the state. And just for, you know, kind of driving two points home, it doesn't compete with the private banks, in fact, North Dakota has more community banks than the entire state of California, despite being a fraction of the size. The Bank of North Dakota got more PPP money to small businesses than, you know, the Bank of America, Chase, or other counterparts. And so the county has the ability and the wherewithal and the funds to launch a bank. And I think, you know, there are some really interesting stepping stones you can take as a body, like for example, you could offer free check cashing and bill payment service treasurer's office, you know, that office already handles cash, already handles payments, has secure transaction capacity, handles sensitive information, you could offer free tax prep for households that qualify for the Earn Income Tax Credit. And so you know, most people qualify for the EITC, lose about a third of their refund to tax prep and interest. That's a third, you know, so if it's a thousand bucks, it's three hundred dollars that don't go to local community stores, that don't flow into the community, and that don't create sales tax for the county and other units of government. You could launch a revolving capital fund. And I think if you did that with the Cook County Land Bank, you would have a real transformational opportunity because you would have developers, black and brown developers, redeveloping communities where you have vacant lots, empty buildings, that often lack the capital or the revolving credit it takes to move these projects forward in a real systematic fashion. If you created a loan fund for that, that can not only generate revenue for the county, but enough revenue such that you can spin off and finance more of these projects. And then, of course, you can follow the lead of North Dakota and California who are really looking at public banking in a much bigger way. But I think four options are stepping stones that you all should consider. There's the public option for housing, Paul is gonna speak to that, he's the expert. But I just want to hit one point at home here. Most affordable housing in the United States is produced through what's called the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit. Fine tool, and it's produced about three million units since nineteen eighty-seven. But we need seven million units yesterday. So it would literally take a hundred and twenty-two years based on how much this credit produces annually. And then I think it really, we should ask ourselves, does it really make sense to tie the supply and production of affordable housing to the demand of wealthy people, banks, and corporations for tax reductions? Because that's how this credit works, right? If you have a dollar in credits, a wealthy person will say, I'll pay eighty-five cents for that dollar credit to, so that I can get a dollar worth of tax reductions for eighty-five cents. The developer then takes that eighty-five cents and uses it to build housing. It's a creative tool. But when you have a Congress that gives out tax cuts, and you have the Trump tax, these credits less valuable. And again, should we be building housing based on tax cuts for the rich? Or should we just produce housing ourselves? And that's where a public option for housing puts the county in a position to be a developer. You could do a public option for broadband. Chattanooga, Tennessee is already doing that, they have one of the fastest internet systems in the country, and it's a city that is now known for innovation, for getting lots of startups in. And, you know, if you look, they've spent, you know, five hundred million dollars to provide free broadband, extremely fast broadband, some of the fastest in the world, and the return has been about two-point-two billion dollars in economic activity, that's quite a multiplier. Cook County could, in theory, build fiber networks for disinvested business corridors in underserved communities. And again, you can close this digital divide, address longstanding inequities, and so this is yet another option. You could do a public option for childcare. Fifty-eight percent of residents in Illinois live in a childcare desert. Subsidies aren't enough, so I think the C cap program is incredible. But even if you have a subsidy, if you don't have a childcare center near where you live, or there aren't enough slots, it doesn't do you any good. That impacts labor force participation, primarily impacts women. And now we have birth rates that are falling in the aggregate, and so the question is, how do we support families? And how do we support people who want to have children and support their families? And one way to do that is by creating a public option for childcare. And it's not new, the US used to provide daycare services. I should call it childcare, I think daycare is not. Childcare services during World War Two, when women had to go and basically make all the weapons, all the armaments that were shipped to soldiers abroad. And the government realized, well, in order for women to go and make these products for the military, you need the childcare services, and so the government did that. But the second the war was over, it got discontinued because they wanted women to go back home. And so my point is, we've done this before, there's precedent for this. Finland and Canada have public childcare systems. And in Cook County, you could do this at the hospital as a pilot. You could offer, you can build facilities in underserved communities, and you can offer childcare services that align with the actual working hours, because not everyone works banker's hours, people work for a second and third shifts. It would do tremendous good for working families to be able to have a public option for childcare. And then finally, there is a public option for groceries and pharmacies. There's not but giving incentives or cash to grocery store pharmacy chains isn't gonna be enough, it hasn't worked. It works sometimes, and so I think the question, again, as Commissioners, you should think about is, giving incentives means that local stakeholders aren't necessarily involved, that distant shareholders are the ones making the corporate decisions. And should we defer our public good to distant shareholders, or might we do a better job? So Baldwin, Florida, Erie, Kansas are two communities that opened grocery stores or took over a grocery store when the one in the community closed. These aren't liberalism or progressivism. I think Erie, Kansas was voted overwhelmingly for Donald Trump, so it's not like this is left or right. Or socialism versus capitalism, it was really filling a market void. And so my recommendations to you all, if you're willing, is a lot of the recommendations that I made on public options, some of them are very complicated and time-intensive, resource-intensive, can take a long time. But you could start with a it's something that is, can be operationalized quickly. It is something that communities desperately need. And there is a way to do a proof of concept. The county already owns, you know, and runs one of the most complex hospital systems in the country with a trauma center, with infectious diseases, research, it's a teaching hospital. There's no reason why if the county can run a three-point-three-billion-dollar enterprise, which is a mid-cap corporation, why we, the county couldn't also run a grocery. And as you're thinking about running the largest guaranteed income demonstrations in the country, linking that to groceries or access to groceries and pharmacies could be really popular. And then my final recommendation is, you all should think about creating a Cook County industrial policy plan. So thinking about all the tools you have that might function as one-offs, how do you bring them together under one singular strategy that combines public enterprises to solve the most entrenched persistent problems that have been plaguing our county and our city for generations? So with that, I'll stop and turn it over to, back to Vice Chair Lane. And Paul Williams can get into the nitty-gritty of this, he's the subject matter expert on how to make these things real.
Thanks, Amea, and Paul, welcome.
Thanks a lot. Yeah, I really appreciate you all having me here today, and I'm excited to talk a little bit more about some of the nuts and bolts on what public enterprise programs look like. You know, in terms of implementation at the, at the local level across the country. Amea, do you have the slides that I sent to share?
I do, I don't, can we make Paul a host?
I can share too, yes, if I can be made host.
Thalia.
No problem.
Thalia, would you be able to do that?
Well, did you mention, Amaga, Commissioner Amaga?
I'm sorry, I was, I was just seeing if Thalia would be able to to ensure that Paul had access to being co-host.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
While we wait for that, we do have quorons, so we'll wait fairly quickly and take the votes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the I'll entertain a motion for approval of the July and August minute meetings, sorry, meeting minutes. If I can have a mover and a seconder and then we'll take a quick vote and then go back. And hopefully Paul has full access at that point.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brutus. Ooh, I heard a few.
Second.
Kalianto. Were there any questions? Any edits to the minutes? Okay, don't see any discussion. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Okay, Paul, do you have access at the moment?
No, I, I believe it's because since I'm not host, I can't give it to him. So.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
You want to make.
I think I got it now. I got it now.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you, Paul.
Okay, great. So I'm going to talk today. I have this presentation that I've, I've given to a number of, of other jurisdictions around the country that I can talk about specifically on, on standing up mixed income, public development programs for, for housing. So a public option for, for housing construction. And this can tie in with, you know, existing agencies like Housing Authority of Cook County, for example. And I'll get a little bit into that. And then I'll talk a little bit more about how some of these public grocery stores in, in some of these rural communities have worked. And, and how they've been stood up over the past couple of years. So the kind of big picture on, on subsidized housing production in the United States is that the amount of affordable housing that we can build is constrained by the availability of the subsidies that we have. Those subsidies are low income housing tax credit, project-based vouchers, bond volume cap. And, you know, looking at the national political conditions, it's, it's somewhat unlikely that these are, those are going to be, you know, significantly expanded anytime in the, in the near future. And then additionally, public housing authorities, you know, are subject to a kind of fair cloth cap. And, you know, there was, there have been some significant policy changes on, on the, on what public housing authorities do over the past couple of decades. And then a third kind of constraint is that total housing production, total investment that happens in communities is really subject to the business cycle and investor confidence. We're all familiar with what happened to investment and housing markets and housing construction following the housing financial crisis. Not only did that housing production kind of fall off a cliff, but all of those construction jobs fell off a cliff. Wages fell off a cliff, you know, all of these things, you know, kind of happen in tandem and, and across business cycles. But public housing authorities themselves, you know, at, at the point where they're at today, they're mostly doing asset management of, of properties that they built at, in, at an earlier time and they're managing voucher programs and administering vouchers. And that's the kind of bulk of the work now. However, there are some public housing authorities around the United States that have begun innovating and, and trying to come up with some new programs that, that they can build in-house that allow them to do a little bit more. And so I'll talk about one of those for a few minutes here. So Montgomery County, Maryland, just outside of Washington DC, their public housing authority is called the Housing Opportunities Commission. And about three years ago, four, three or four years ago now, they came up with a program idea where their county capitalized a revolving loan fund for them. And so the county is really just putting a few million dollars a year into this fund, which the housing authority then issued a bond against. And, you know, they get, they get those dollars upfront, right? They got a, they got a $50 million fund upfront from a county commitment to, to pay that bond for them. And that fund allows them to make investments in mixed income affordable housing projects. And importantly, and this is kind of the key to it, is it doesn't actually require the use of low income housing tax credits, bond volume cap, vouchers, state or federal grants. So they're not drawing on any of those existing scarce subsidies. They're creating a kind of new pie for themselves, right? A lot of the solutions that, that we talk about with affordable housing production tend to be kind of slicing up the pie in a slightly different way. This is, they're making a new pie for themselves that is allowing them to do more affordable housing production than they would otherwise be able to. And that's, that's where it's really significant. And so a little bit on the mechanics of how it works, you know, this, this graph is, you know, it looks scarier than it is. Essentially what happens is, is they take out a mortgage, like anyone takes out a mortgage to build a housing project. They put a portion of funding in from their revolving loan fund. And they work with a development partner during the construction and lease-up period. And then at stabilization, when the building's complete and leased up, they refinance, get a big permanent mortgage and they take 100% ownership of the project at that point. So prior to that, they're kind of sharing it with a development partner. But then at the end of the day, they're the one who has that asset sitting on their balance sheet, which is somewhat counter to the, to the way that, you know, something like a public-private partnership typically works, which is, you know, commonly what happens is the public sector puts up all of the money and the private sector gets all of the long-term gain, which is, you know, something that I think we've, I hope you would come away that, what Amaya and I are talking about is those solutions don't have the best long-term outcomes. And so here's just kind of a little bit more simplified version of this is what the money looks like in one of these mixed income publicly owned developments. So for the first few years of the project, they have their construction debt. They have, the orange here is from this revolving fund that they capitalized. And then these little slivers of, of actual, you know, cash equity that they're putting into the project. And then at year four, it becomes a fully Housing Opportunities Commission, Public Housing Authority-owned project. And, and it, you know, sits on their balance sheet in perpetuity and they have control over it. And they have control over the rent levels and the affordability and management and operations and all of those things. And to step back a little bit on, on just kind of how they're doing this mixed income, this is a really simplified version of it, but essentially they have a range of incomes that are, that are able to live in these projects, right? So they have all the way from, in some of these projects, they have all the way from 30% to 50% AMI to 80% to 120% AMI and more moderate and higher income people too. And because they have that mix of incomes, they're able to, you know, they're able to operate this building on a kind of neutral revenue basis. So that they're able to provide these low-income apartments without the need for those scarce subsidies. Which is not, you know, those subsidies do exist and they should be expanded, but the kind of way to think about it is this is a way to produce even more, you know, even if you expanded those, this is a way to produce even more of those affordable units. And then here's, this is, this is a idea that I think gets a little bit into the industrial policy concept. So when, when, when we have recessions, housing production and housing investment is one of the first things, one of the kind of leading indicators that, that a recession might be coming and construction jobs and construction wages are one of the first things to fall when, when a recession begins because housing investment is one of the first things to fall. And so particularly in, in high population urban areas like the Cook County area, where you have a need for multifamily housing and apartments, having a public developer program like this allows you to kind of stabilize production when you go through business cycles, right? So one of the, one of the ways that Montgomery County is, is starting to get at this, starting to get at this is because they have this revolving fund, they're able to not only, you know, build and develop the projects that they have in their pipeline that they want to build, but they can go out to private developers who have, say, done some site planning, done some architecture and engineering. They have a project they want to do. But that developer can't close on the financing for one reason or another. Perhaps they can't get a good loan, perhaps. You know, any number of issues could come up. The investor may walk away from the deal for some reason. And so the county can come in and say, hey, I have this revolving loan fund. I can close this deal. I can finish it. You can help me build it, but at the end of the day, I'm going to put a bunch of affordable units into it with my funds. And I'm going to keep it on my balance sheet for the long term. And these, and the private developers in, in Montgomery County are happy to enter a deal like that, right? Because they, for the most part, want to build their project and get out at year four, year five anyway, right? They just want to build and sell. If the buyer at the end of the day is the county, it's no problem to them. Anyway, and, and that helps you, these projects that would fall through the cracks when investment starts to drop. If you have a public program like this, you can actually lift those projects up and keep them going. And that helps you sustain your jobs, your construction jobs, your construction wages and, and things like that. And then, you know, here, these are just some kind of questions of, you know, there's some kind of implementation questions of what does it actually take? What does it? How would you design an institution to, to do a program like this? You know, can you make use of your existing agencies like your public housing authority or your state housing finance agency? Where, where do you have the kind of public capacity where you can build something out like this? And, you know, in most cases that, you know, generally is going to look like a pilot program. The Rhode Island Legislature actually just passed a pilot program to do a mixed income public development using some of their recovery, state and local fiscal relief fund dollars. And they're, you know, doing a small pilot on this right now. And, you know, these kind of, the kind of key pieces are a revolving loan fund and, you know, realistically, some public housing authority staff who are, you know, empowered to innovate and try out programs like this. And then I want to leave one closing thought that I put in here at the last minute as I was thinking of it. There's, there's a, an article that was in Vox recently about these kind of programs. And I wanted to leave you with this quote from, which I'll just read out loud. It's from Zachary Marks, who's the chief real estate officer at Montgomery County's Housing Authority. And I think it really gets to the point of, of why public enterprises like this are powerful, not just in the short term, but in the long term. So he says, "Both because we don't have to meet private sector return requirements and because it's much easier to set policy on things that you own, all of our revenue gets poured back into overall housing production and operation." A lot of the time I'm talking to people about the short-term benefits of our model. But frankly, the biggest benefit is the value that we're creating very slowly over 20 years. So that people sitting in my chair in two or three decades will have a ton of resources that can be realizable by them to continue the mission, right? So what they're doing is they're building a, they're building a real public portfolio of mixed income housing that, that they know is going to be, is a sustainable program, allows them to ride affordable housing. And over the long term is, is giving them a big balance sheet that they'll be able to use in the future to do even more. And I think that's the, that's the kind of core way of thinking about, about some programs like this, right? You want to, you want to run programs that actually expand your possibilities of what you're able to do. When I think the common way of thinking about it is when you run a program, you're using up your scarce capacity, right? This is the type of program that expands your possibilities. And then I'll stop the share there. You know, and then on, on the grocery stores, I think that is a relatively simple model that, that also works for a kind of pilot program. And, and the two places where, well, I mean, there's, there's actually a good handful, five or six now that have done something like this in the past few years. But the two I'm most familiar with are in Baldwin, Florida and Erie, Kansas. And in both of those cases, there was, you know, these are towns of, you know, 10,000 people, 15,000 people. And, and there's one big grocery store in town or maybe two little grocery stores. And the big grocery store said, you know what? There's not enough demand. I'm not making enough of a return. I'm out of here. And they shut down the store. And that's obviously a huge problem for, for a town like that. And so you know, what did they do? They bought the property. They bought the store and created a small utility, you know, a public utility and appointed a board and hired an executive director. And said, here's a little bit of revenue to get you started. Now run a grocery store. And they had, you know, someone in the area who, who knew how to run a grocery store and had run grocery stores before as the director. And now they just have a business. And it's, you know, in both of those cases, they're, they're essentially revenue neutral at this point, right? They're not, they're not making a killing. But they're also not drawing down on a ton of resources, right? They're able to make their, their debt payments for their purchase of the property. You know, and they have contacts. They, they buy groceries from a supplier like anyone would buy groceries from a supplier. And I, and I think that's, you know, the way I think about that is that it's just a really sustainable, sustainable solution to these kind of problems of food deserts in a way that, oh, this grocery store closed down. Let's find someone else and throw some tax credits at them or a tax incentive at them and see if they'll stick around for five years, six years. Oh, they left. Well, let's try, you know, it's this kind of whack-a-mole game that, that gets played today as opposed to just, I can just kind of operate this on a revenue-neutral basis. So that's all I'll say on that. I'd love to, I, I think we have some time. I don't know if we have time for questions.
Indeed, indeed we do. And Will, thanks to both of you for an extraordinarily compelling presentation. I'm sure we'll have lots of, lots of questions and comments. Commissioners, please indicate if you'd like to step up and make some inquiry here.
Commissioner Malone.
Malone, if you'd be so kind, please.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to present to us today. Fascinating and also one of my favorite topics. So really grateful that you all came today. Quick question. So one of the things that is coming to mind for me is I've seen different models for this around the country. Some of the models are like, hey, we want to implement this type of policy and/or these types of entities through an existing department. Some people are launching city or state-based authorities. What models are you seeing that are most successful? Because some, a lot of what I'm seeing is people starting full-on authorities. And I think there are areas where government is strong, right? Like government is the thing that whether you want to interact with it or not, everyone is going to have to engage with government no matter what. Or government's going to engage with you. But it also has areas for growth operationally. And so I'm interested in how you're able to juxtapose the areas of opportunity for government in our operations and facilitation structures. And then what structure you've seen be most successful that solves for some of those tensions or at least circumvents them?
But, you know, my, my kind of quick response on that is, is that that's a question that is extremely context-dependent, right? What makes sense in terms of where you house a public enterprise-type program? Really depends on your, on your local institutional environment, right? If you have a existing strong public housing authority with some capacity, then absolutely that's going to make sense. If you, if you don't, or, or if you have a really complex system and there's entrenched programs and resistance to, to new things, then, then maybe a kind of political path of establishing a new agency is, is what's going to make sense. And, and you see different things working in, in, in different places, right? Across the, you know, Montgomery County, Maryland, very successful program for their public developer. They just made use, they created a program within their existing public housing authority. Baldwin, Florida and Erie, Kansas, they created new. Baldwin, Florida and Erie, Kansas, they created new, uh, public utilities. They established new entities to run these grocery stores. Both of those are very successful and it, and it, I, I think it really depends on the context and, but I mean, those are the right questions to ask, I think, very much. Um. It's just. As you get into, okay, what kind of program do I want to run? You kind of take stock of what's your institutional environment and, and, um. You know, that helps you understand your possibilities, I think.
Do you all have any recommendations for Cook County based on what we know of Cook County?
If I may, is it okay? Can I say one? I, I would just say that this is where having a strategy and industrial policy would be critical, right? So. Um, cause getting a sense of all the tools you have available to you. How they've been used in the past and how you, and what you actually want to do, right? So. I'm not, while I, you know, like public enterprises. You know, you could have a strategy for grocery stores where in one community it is TIF and property tax reductions. And in another community, it is a public enterprise, um, and it could toggle between the two. But I think part of it is having a real. And I think what we do generally as policymakers is use this tactically as one-offs. Um, versus having a long-term strategy and how we want to use all of our tools.
Thank you. Alder Person ahead and I'd be very curious to learn what your reaction is.
Um, so one, if, uh, the chair would recognize me for purposes of quorum, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I have on, on deck, Commissioner Alston, uh, Aldra for San Haddon, um, Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Brutus, um. Aglipai and Ex officio credentials. So we've added you all to quorum.
Thank you.
Um, and then, um, this is one of my favorite presentations.
Bottom might be.
Yeah, you know, you, you, you know me well enough now. Um. You know, I think these are fantastic ideas and I know this is for the county space. Um, and maybe the county is the, the government entity that's suited for this. Um, but it certainly seems like. For goals of stability and I think particularly, um, Amea, when you were talking about. Things that we do, right? To solve our housing issues. Um, I run into those frustrations every day. Um, and you're like, it's never enough. Um, and in all these meetings that we have, like. With Department of Housing or other folks, it's very clear that our tools are insufficient. We're never going to meet our needs. And so I really like the idea of just kind of stepping like laterally to the side. Um, coming at this from a totally different angle and trying to push for, um, these kind of, um. Industrial, uh, was that the term, Amea? Industrial.
Industrial.
Industrial policy. Um. I don't know. It seems like common sense to me. Um, so I appreciate the examples that you've shared and. My brain's already kind of turning with, um, fun ways that maybe, uh, maybe the city of Chicago can get on this, uh, as well. Um, so wondering, um, you know, on the housing piece. The development part has been, I think most of where the examples you guys mentioned were. Um, I wonder if you could speak a little bit to kind of the post-development piece, um, and those examples.
Um, that's a great question. You know, post-development, I think you have a lot of options, right? You know, there is. You know, for example, for a, a place like New York City where the New York City Housing Authority is a really tremendous. In size and scope, uh, uh, public organization. Uh, they have the capacity to do, uh, full public operations and management of, of all of their properties. Um, for less well-equipped agencies. Uh, in other places around the country, there's typically a pretty strong, um, nonprofit network that it, that can potentially do, um. You know, operations and management duties and can be, you know, on a contracted basis. And I think, you know, these are kind of questions that get. You know, a lot of the kind of, uh. Bats that people will swing to bat down ideas like this is they'll say, oh, well, the public sector doesn't have any capacity to do. This more complicated part, which is like long-term, uh, management and like running day-to-day operations at the site. And in, in some place, in some places that's just not true, but in some places it, it is true. And you know, maybe you want to build up that capacity and that takes time and resources. But maybe it's a thing you want to do. And, uh, but you have options in the interim if you don't have that capacity at the moment, right? And in, I know, yeah, in Chicago and Cook County, there's a. A giant nonprofit network of, um, folks who I'm sure would be interested in managing new properties, right?
Thank you.
Alder Person ahead and I would like to make one, two comments in reaction to what you've already said. Uh, one, uh, common sense, yes, common sense isn't so common. Second, um, thrilled to hear that you're picking up on this and seeing what application there might be within the city. And, uh, I for one would love to work with you in a collaborative way to, uh, you know, see what we might do. To optimize this sort of strategy within the city as we're doing so at the county level too, because. You know, the, the, uh, the municipal boundary is something of an artificial line. We're dealing with people. And to the extent we can deal with more people, more successfully, uh, I'm in. So thank you, thank you for your positive reaction and, uh. I for one, please count on me to, uh, to help you at the city level as well in any way I can. So thanks. Uh, other, uh, so, so Sheila, I think we have, uh, you, Commissioner Flores, if you would be so kind.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to Pa and Amaya for coming and talking. Uh, presenting this important work within the county. I mean, what COVID has taught us is to like, just break things apart and figure out what's working and what's not working. And the need to really think more comprehensively about solutions. We have been, um. Really taught that. There is a, continues to be a huge need. Um, we knew the fragmentation of support within, in particular suburban Cook County. And that's why we really catapulted to figure out what, what, what were the gaps? And what were the things that the county needed to quickly undertake? That's been great. We, we did it, but now we're in a position to really think outside of the box and figure out. How do we leverage what the county can do alongside private sector and philanthropic partners? To think more broadly, to think and coordinate across the board with the city and even, even regionally with. Color counties to address these issues because these lines. Are artificial lines, individuals, if they need a job, if they need housing, they're going to cross municipal, municipal boundaries. They're going to cross. Um, county boundaries to get those needed resources. So I, I would love to continue discussing and, and thinking through this and figuring out. What is a role? Where are the most, there's gaps across the board. So what are the most significant gaps? And how do we align efforts to, to really? Um, think about moving some things forward in a positive direction and collaboration with, with our city partners. So I, I appreciate, um, you joining us to present this important work and I would love to continue this discussion.
Thank you, So Sheil. Other commissioners have any questions or comments?
If, if may, uh, Chair, I can, I know you probably have some, um, yourself. I, I.
Occasionally I do.
And it's always great, uh, great feedback. Uh, I just had a general question that really comes to mind as, as the presentations were going forward. Um. Uh, so first of all, thank you both for, for the, the insight, um, and just very, um, informative, uh. You know, processes and in, in, in policy that we can, uh, take actionably. So, uh, you know, development is such a scary word for a lot of our residents, um, especially black and brown who have been. Um, you know, have been, um, a lot of the times displaced. So I am just wondering in your perspective, what type of, um. Things need to be incorporated and safeguards need to be incorporated into this industrial policy plan? To be able to protect people and continue to, to gain and, and solidify public trust. Um, I think, um, it, I, I completely understand you have been able to highlight it in such a. Efficient way of how it is helpful, how we are protecting. But for, for many people, it, it's a scary thing to, to really take that step forward. So I'm wondering. Any ideas in general that, that, that would be helpful in that public trust aspect?
That's a great question, Chair. Um, you know, I think. You, obviously as we all know, there's been, you know, forty, fifty-year effort of. Using fear and anger to diminish trust in public institutions. And so when you invest in anger, you can't be surprised that people are angry. And then figure out how to peel them back. And that's kind of where we are today. Um, but I think, you know, public institutions can and should be a force for good. And I think it starts by, you know. Doing things that actually address people and meet them where they are and include them in the solutions. You're probably going to hear my dogs. So apologize. Um, you know, for example, if, if the county or the city clerk's office, for example, were to offer free check cashing service. That would save people five percent of their incomes of the users, right? That's a lot of money and that's a tangible net gain for people. That's five percent more that's flowing through the local economy. If we were able to align the Cook County Land Bank with some sort of capital entity so that developers could. Move much more quickly and not just rely on Renova or the other institutions. You could, you could see progress very quickly. So I think some of it is, is yes, there are stepping stones, but I think involving community. True policy and meeting people where they are and giving them a seat at the table and then help set that table, I think is important.
And, uh, I thought I'd add on, uh, particular on, on the, um, housing question is, is. You know, I think a lot of, um. Cook County and, and Chicago has a lot of land that is, that is vacant. Um, and right, that's a situation where you're not going to have, um. If you're, if you're building housing on, if you're building publicly owned mixed income housing on vacant land, for example, the Cook County Land Bank owns, then, um. That's, you're not doing displacement, right? You're, you're providing. New homes that are, that are public and mixed income and, and, uh, it's not, you're not tearing down any building or, or kicking anyone out, right? Um, and I think, and that, and that's really, you know, a big thing that, that Cook County has is it's a tremendous resource to have so much, um, land available. And I think that's, you know, to, to get to the point of, you know, what does it mean to develop a, a countywide industrial policy? I think it means taking stock of, as I said earlier, not just your institutions that you have available, but, but your other, your, some of your real resources, right? And the land that is in the Cook County Land Bank is a lot of land and that's a, that's a huge real resource, uh, and thinking about. You know, what's the best way to deploy that resource and create the most economic opportunity for the people of Cook County is, uh, an important question.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Brutus, please. And congratulations on your, uh, on your news.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, Vice Chairman Lane, I appreciate that comment, although I'm sure we'll talk about that at a future meeting and not right now, but, uh.
I suspect that might be the case.
Uh, yeah. Yes, but, um, yeah, I, I just wanted to make a comment. This is, um. Wonderful innovative ways to come up with solutions to a lot of our problems that you guys are working on. And I just appreciate. Hearing this while I'm listening to it and it reminds me of, you know, some of the things that you're advocating for. Um, Mr. Poirier, when you were in public office. And so I'm, I'm very happy to see that you are continuing. You know, your advocacy of these things that obviously are very important to you still and, you know, sharing that with the world at large and. Giving us many things to ponder and consider as we try to make this place more efficient, right? Um, and Paul, uh, I know you were at DOH for a little bit. Um, I remember you very quickly as you weren't here long enough. Um, but I'm happy to see that you've landed somewhere, you know, I didn't know that you left during COVID and, you know, until I. Came back in the office, but good to see that you are, uh, still in this arena, you know, trying to. Really, uh, you know, create more affordable solutions for our housing prices, not only in Cook County, but. Glad to hear that you have said that you're talking to folks all over the country and the world. About trying to solve for this and, you know, come up with, you know, ways to make housing, you know, more accessible. So, uh, just congratulate you both on your work. Want to say thank you and just chime in. Uh, you know, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, uh, thank you for, uh. And I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Brutus. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Cooley has his hand up.
Uh, please.
Thanks for the presentation, um, Roger Cooley with the Chicago Food Policy Action Council. Excited for the focus on grocery stores and food access as a piece of this, particularly with the. I mean, it's in an ongoing issue for a long period of time and there has been a lot of attention because of the. Withdrawal of Englewood, uh, Whole Foods and the two, all these that even, you know, withdrew on even shorter notice. And excited for thinking about the transition from this being. You know, up, up to the capriciousness of the market. And seeing these things as vital assets, public assets if need be, then are mandatory in our communities. And so excited we're here, Alder Manhattan's interest in this. And I know the Chicago. Uh, the mayor's office, Food Equity Council is starting to look at prioritizing this as well. And what are ways that the city can make stronger investments? So excited to see what the possible overlaps are and connectivity here. But also wondering, you know, thinking about mixed use, so the combination of affordable housing with a grocery store. With publicly owned green energy as part of the combination, how all those things could interconnect. Particularly all the climate change energy in, you know, and building upon the work the state has done with CJA and other green energy efforts. With energy collaboratives and cooperatives as part of this mix. Excited to see those explorations as we talk through the policy development, but wondering how important a public bank would be to help. Support multiple of these enterprises moving forward. Um, not just the grocery, not just the affordable housing or green energy and some childcare or the other ones. But how much a public bank could help be the startup for a lot of these initiatives?
You know, that's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. Um. I'll say this, I, you know. In the word that I used to represent, uh, Lincoln Square, Ravenswood North Center. We didn't have to depend on grants and philanthropy or one-off subsidies to encourage economic development. Went to business owners and home prospective home buyers in a systematic fashion. And when it happens systematically, not just over five, 10, but over generations, you end up with systematic public and private investment. Not disinvestment. And so it seems to me what we're trying to do in every community. That has a lack of access to banking is to solve for a lack of systematic lend with everything but lending. So grants, philanthropy, financial literacy, tax, I mean, like we don't, so we know what works. Come to my community that I used to represent. And yet we don't try to repeat that elsewhere. So I think public banks is critical because I think banks, and I didn't mention this before, do one critical thing. That they have a superpower that is a public franchise that you and I give to them. They create new money when they lend. Right? They, they don't take my deposit and lend to you. They invent new money and it works until it doesn't. And when it doesn't, we bail it out. But when it does work, like it does in predominantly white communities, you see economic development. So lots of communities have been left behind by the banking industry. And I think if money is a public good and if the provision of money creation is also seen as a public good. You need a utility to provide that public good and that's where a public bank can be really critical.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone, please.
Quick question for you all. I, um, I, I hear the value in the functional. I hear the functional value in the utility of these enterprises, but I'm not hearing a lot about the socio-political cultural mechanisms. To engage these enterprises and actually move them forward, right? So like, I know what people are trying to do in philanthropy and financial literacy around banking. And I know we have this public bank opportunity. And then the next step is. Why are people in black and brown communities unbanked? What is the culture around being banked or unbanked? It's not just like you don't have access to it solely. It's more than just the utility of it. It's also a culture around people. Some people don't want to. Don't trust government already, and then they also don't trust banks. And so the combination of the two doesn't necessarily just encourage them to do it because we're putting it in a marginalized community. So do you all have any socio-political cultural references around the solutions that you're suggesting? Cause I. socio political cultural references around the solutions that you're suggesting? Because I think that's the piece for me that's going to make or break whether or not these work, because it's the public trust thing that Commissioner Nia mentioned, but it's also the like culture around why someone should trust these initiatives and what is also hindering them socio politically, culturally, geographically to engage with them outside of solely access. So barriers to access and achievement.
That's a really wonderful question. I would, you know, I think part of the problem in the public banking space, at least is my opinion. And again, not to disparage any organizations that work in the space of financial literacy is that if you look at the Community Reinvestment Act, it gives banks credit for sitting on the boards of organizations that work on public policy and financial literacy. And so a lot of the organizations that do work in this space will talk about solutions that tinker on the margins, but not actually ever propose the real solution. And so what ends up happening is the table and the agenda gets set by, there's like, there's a problem with the conflict of interest there. So I think there's one. Two, I agree with you. People do not. And then people like me who will talk about public bank look like radicals because the groups that hit on who say they work on financial literacy are like, well, wait a minute, he's way out there. That's outside of the mainstream. So I think that there's that piece. So setting that narrative is important. And I don't think it means attacking these organizations. I think it just means recognizing where the conflicts are. Second, I think trust in banking is a problem and has always been a problem when you have institutions like Wells Fargo and others that prey on poor communities with overdraft fees, et cetera. And so I, and and then there's trust in government. I don't think that there is a silver bullet to say if we do X, Y, and Z, we can solve for this. This is why I think there is a stepping stone approach for offering free check cashing, offering people free bill payment services, offering people free tax prep so that thirty five percent of their EITC doesn't get sucked away by refund anticipation loans. I think there's a way to get there. And I think also creating a revolving loan fund so that people can see capital flowing to the communities. I prefer something that is, let's do it all at once, but I recognize that, as you said, the politics of this. So I think stepping stones would be really helpful. And I think, again, Cook County could offer free check cashing immediately. You have a you have a customer facing operation that handles cash and other transactions. You could do it tomorrow. Clerk's office in the city could do it. So could the Secretary of State, which actually has seventy five DMV operations. They have like a real scale like a bank does. So there are there are opportunities here. I just think we need to be creative and kind of leverage the existing infrastructure and to answer your question, Commissioner, narrative is huge. And and I think you need people in the community and stakeholders to be involved.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I don't see any. Let me try a couple of my own briefly, if I may. I was very impressed by the specific examples each of you brought forward. And these are examples of successes. So if some of us may be skeptical, are there examples of failures you might point to where the intent was there? Good judgment, careful planning, for one reason or another, one or another of these kinds of approaches flopped, and most important, why?
Well, you know, I think let me rethink, I mean, Paul, you probably have something people talk about in the housing context, public housing as a failure, that look what happened. But it wasn't a failure in the traditional sense because we stopped investing in public housing. We built it as a job creation mechanism for working class folks. We did, we built it for returning soldiers. And the second black and brown people started living in public housing is when government disinvested in it. And it's labeled a failure today because of what happens when you have systemic poverty and what happens when you have systemic disinvestment. I tend to look at this a little bit differently, Vice Chair Lane, which is running an enterprise comes with risk. And you're gonna be ups and flows, and you're gonna make mistakes, and you're gonna have success. But the most innovation that you ever see in the public realm when it invests in industrial policy is you invest in things and you don't know what the outcome is gonna be. The internet started off as a research project that ended up becoming something that we can't live without. Satellite technology started the same way.
Oh, I'm I'm with you. And I understand entrepreneurship by definition, you know, it has risk attached to it, though, you know, and but therefore upside. But I'm I'm really trying to look not at the historic examples, but the more recent examples that have been attempted along the lines each of you have described, which for whatever reason did not achieve what it had hoped to achieve so that we can learn from those examples or the things that you might point to as kind of wires that we ought not trip.
Yeah, that's a good question. And you know, I I think that I think that getting local and state governments interested in in running programs like this is there there hasn't been much appetite for it for such a long time. You know, I think a place that you could go and and look through history to see where there were more attempts and likely more failures is a hundred years ago, it the progressive reform movement that kind of took over cities and states across, particularly in the Midwest, but also in in the Northeast, among other places, is, you know, that movement is is how we got things like public transit systems and you know, the the CTA was not always the CTA. Right? There was a network of private companies that wouldn't work with each other, you know, up until the nineteen thirties and the New Deal came around and there was kind of consolidation and a recognition that actually this this is something that should be a public service and run as a public enterprise. And so there's a lot of things, there were a lot of things in, you know, the hundred and ten to eighty years ago range. Things that were in the market that kind of got folded into the realm of public enterprise. You know, and I off the top of my head, I I, you know, I don't know of many that really flopped. Although, you know, to the point earlier, you know, about about housing, I mean, I think that's that is a difficult one for a lot of people when they think about, oh, public development of housing, they think it's it's going to be something that they read about on the news in the eighties or nineties that, you know, they didn't like and and but I think I think it's true that the reason that that things went awry is because the federal government stopped putting money into into public housing, right? Like, that's the you look at the you know, investments, and I had a slide about that, that that's just what happened in the eighties and nineties is the the money stopped being invested.
I appreciate that. Let me just one follow up question, and it's kind of the flip side of what I've just asked. And that is, I I like thinking about this as a cohesive, integrated system where these various ideas might be brought together and where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts in terms of social impact. Yet, I'm a process guy, and I look at things from the general to the specific. And I and and I just wanted to kind of seek your reaction to this question. How might we start to secure buy in from the necessary or desirable stakeholders? And obviously, there's already been reference to community engagement. There's reference to those policymakers who have it within their statutory authority to make such decisions. But what what how would you go about tackling this? And what what would the early steps be in your view? Because you've talked about all kinds of different entrepreneurial approaches to fill market vacuums for the social good. Where where might you consider beginning?
I mean, I I think I would start with taking on industrial policy as a commission and start looking what what the what some of the systemic problems are, what the tools you have are that are available to you and what are what what the politics might allow you to do, right? To create sort of a comprehensive view. And then use that. And there are lots of national experts who I think would be, including Paul, who would be great to engage to kind of start thinking about this more broadly and specifically to Cook County. So that's one place to start. And I think, secondly, you know, Cook County is on the leading edge. It's about to start one of the largest guaranteed income demonstrations in the country. So it might also be, you know, you study industrial policy writ large, what it means for accounting. But maybe think about adding some extra things to the Cook County guaranteed income pilot. Maybe you do want to offer cheap free check cashing or some financial services. Alderhead, and I mean, we could do that in the city as well. So I think there are ways to kind of piggyback, but also look at this comprehensively as well. And I think this commission is my opinion is perfectly suited to take on industrial policy.
Well, I think so too. So I I should point out to the commissioners that each of our witnesses today has generously agreed to collaborate with a working group we might create around these topics. And I want to thank them for their presentation and also thank them for their willingness to so serve going forward because you know, they have extraordinary experience and expertise in these areas that we can tap into to save us some missteps along the way and use our time as efficiently and effectively as we can in terms of driving positive social change using these strategies. So I, one, I would like to thank you both. And beyond that, I would invite any or all of the commissioners who might be willing to serve on such a working group to reach out to me and we can start assembling that group and getting to work on these issues. So I I thank I thank both Amaya and Paul for their service here and in their day jobs such as they are and for their extraordinary leadership, which we will seek to leverage in our further work. So thanks to both of you.
Yeah. And before we close off, I do see Ex officio criticals has his hand up. So I don't know if there's any final comments that that he may want to have input on.
Actually, I want to take a whack at your question that you asked earlier, Commissioner Nia, which I don't, it wasn't that it wasn't answered. I think it was a answer to maybe a different question. And that was the the negative reaction that development, the word development might have in 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 communities. And I don't think it's so much the the question of displacement as a result of the specific direct investment, let's say, in properties that are already abandoned. It's the, it's the knockoff or the, it's the, it's the subsequent consequences of successful developments in a community and what that may trigger in terms of further gentrification or gentrification in 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 the surrounding properties. And so it's not, it's it, and that is, so in the models that you presented, Paul, or you looked at it, for instance, how does the, how does the the larger question of gentrification that extends outside of the direct investments? How does that get managed in the models that you've examined? Because I think that's what Commissioner Nia was sort of trying to put her finger on.
Sure. Yeah. You know, I I think something that separates right, I I think it's important to keep in mind that this is, this is public housing that we're talking about. And I I think in particular public housing is not something that that is commonly thought of as, you know, causing gentrification. And it's, you know, if it's providing housing for kind of a range of incomes and it's operating on a, you know, it's not seeking private sector returns in the way that, you know, one of those kind of drivers of that behavior that I think you're talking about is the rent seeking of private sector returns. If you have a public housing authority that is not seeking those things, then that kind of behavior isn't isn't gonna isn't likely to show up as some as gentrification. But, you know, I mean, this is, this is kind of a a growing, feels like both an age old and a kind of growing question is, how do you do? How do you bring the positive aspects of development to communities without the negative aspects that that people don't like, right? Like, we do want grocery stores, nice new grocery stores that have, you know, all of the goods and services that people want and need and and modern apartments with dishwashers and and laundry machines and and, you know, people, people deserve to have high quality amenities and apartments in all parts of Cook County. And and I think it's a question of how do you, how do we bring those types of investments and give people those resources without those you know, without the aspects of development that that people aren't interested in. And I think that a public development program that is providing for a range of incomes and is not seeking profits is actually a really excellent way to do that.
I would add to that, though, looking at strategies that enable others within the community to gain. If you think of it as sort of growing community equity. And so you have an investment that that provides for better housing. I mean, I don't, I don't think what you mean to say is that this is in, this is inferior in some ways and therefore isn't going to attract other investment in the in the neighborhood. I mean, I don't think that's what you're saying. So let's say that it does attract other kinds of investment that is or traditional commercial. How does that, you know, the 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 challenge, I think, that that people don't think through is then how does that get captured as sort of a return to those residents who already exist? And in in the place. And and I think that in thinking through this model that you're presenting, which I think is is great. The the other piece that needs to be maybe added to this is sort of is that sort of general community equity growth piece that that sort of, you know, where others can sort of draw on that as a source of their own future investments. And you know, for instance, if there's a local local property owner, and they have a, they have a, you know, they live in a two flat, so they rent one one floor and they live in the other. There's a, there's improvement in 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 the general value in the community. How do they capture that? And and sort of, you know, monetize that for themselves in terms of be able to make future investments. So so that that I think is a piece that it's a problem for a lot of development strategies and and it's not exclusive to yours, but if there's a way to sort of think that through, I think that would have some it would go to the question that that Commissioner Nia is raising, which is, you know, how do how do the other people in the community sort of look at this and say, well, this isn't for us, and why do we want this? You know, where you can make it something for them.
Yeah. And and if I could just kind of, you know, add on to that, I think that the reason why I was particularly interested on that is we have a huge development that is being looked at with public housing in the Leclerc Courts neighborhood, which was a neighborhood that was predominantly black with public housing. And there's going to be a huge investment. And this happened to be in my district where there's going to be FQHC, new modern apartments that would be available to individuals there and grocery store. So it it will be a holistic development in which we 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 attempt to address a lot of the 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 areas that have been highlighted in the presentation. And I think there have been, you know, shifts in individuals looking at that like as an attractive place now to live and to buy, you know. So I think although it would be public housing and and there is there there is investment in different ways. And I think as we develop the industrial policy plan, if that is something that the commission continues to look at and and really tries to iron out, there has to be, in my opinion, different protections for residents and individuals. And I think that that's what we would like to look at because Chicago in general, Cook County, is an area where although we hear all of these negative things in in unfortunately in the media, it it's still an area that is very looked at as for for individuals to live in, right? It's it's an area that is appealing. It's a beautiful city, but there are instances where although there is a to to Vice Chair Lane's point regarding having good intentions and looking at that, I think that, and I know that we'll we'll definitely, and I thank you both for agreeing to kind of talk this through because we wouldn't want to, you know, propose an industrial policy plan that necessarily doesn't have different safeguards. And I, and that's where my head went into, well, how do we look at that? I mean, there's a lot of examples of different developments, maybe not necessarily just with housing, but like, for example, six oh six and other things that have it led in different ways that weren't originally intended because they are projects that are appealing to a lot of individuals. So I think I I know that we'll have to table that conversation because it does take a lot of unpacking and also visualizing the potential threats to to public housing, housing Also uh visualizing the potential threats to, to public housing, housing and investments. Um, uh, from a government, public's uh point of view. Um, to be able to address um any of those um issues going forward. So that's why I, I had thought about that question, but. I appreciate, again, um, your willingness to participate in a working group to really talk this through.
Yes, and then the topic of unpacking, I do want to thank already. Uh, Commissioners Thomas and Cooley, each of whom has volunteered to serve on the working group. And uh, as others uh are also interested in raising their hand, if you kindly reach out to me by email. Uh, we'll, we'll put the group together and make this happen, and again, Amaya and Paul, thank you very much for your uh contributions today. And uh, in the future, as it relates to this effort, we're deeply grateful to you. Uh, and I think at this point, uh, Madam Chair, we probably can move on to other items on the agenda, so. Amaya and Paul, you're more than welcome to stick around. Uh, and, and participate in this conversation as well, but if you need to move on, we'll understand that too. Uh, so thanks so much for being with us today and uh, have a, have a good evening, and again, we're, we're deeply grateful for uh. For your uh stimulating conversation today, and we'll look forward to more of the same in the future.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for having me.
And Madam Chair, with your permission, perhaps we can uh invite reports of the working groups, is that an appropriate next step? The clock move ahead, so I, I will identify the uh, the working groups and uh. If there are reports of those who are leading those groups, please uh, let us know that. So the, the first group on my agenda is the Community Investment Vehicle Working Group, uh co-chaired by Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner. Raymer, I'm not sure if either of them is here this evening, am I right? Not, not hearing, not hearing any, I will, I will move on. Uh, the Diverse Talent Pipeline Working Group, Commissioner Aglopay, I think you are with us, and uh, do you have anything to share, please?
Hello, can you hear me? I'm having trouble hearing, I'm sorry, I'm on.
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great.
And you're, you're on if you'd be so kind.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, uh, I've um, have talked and, have talked and, have spoken to uh Josh Harris. And he's aware of this, this uh group. I, I unfortunately, due to my travel schedule as of late with uh. The position that I have, I haven't been able to convene, but I've gotten a break now, um, have a little bit of rhythm with the, the um. The position that I have now after, after a few months on it, and I will be convening uh folks for that and connecting with Josh on um. On that working group, but Josh and I have been playing tag for the last six weeks, actually, um, at the Obama Center.
As, as you're, as you're settling into your new responsibilities, we certainly understand and will look forward to uh. Hearing a report from you in future days, and thank you so much. Uh, the uh, uh, working group relating to underutilized church property, Commissioner Yonin, do you have?
Yeah, yeah, so unfortunately, you know, keep missing Christie here to just give a little bit of an update. I know with. One of the actions, next steps was to just kind of talk to some of the mirrors and managers about what they see some of the challenges. You know, with the church and their, you know, particular communities have been, and so she's kind of had some information that she shared, but. I know even today she's probably continuing on this subject, so uh, we really wait for her to be able to kind of give us an update on that is kind of our next step here.
Understood. Thank you very much, Commissioner Yonin, and I'm not, I don't believe Commissioner Anderson is here. To give us a report on the reparations working group, am I correct? Believe that's the case. Uh, Commissioner Killen, I think, is here. Uh, or was here, is she still around? Uh, to give us a report on the uh electric uh vehicle working. She just hopped off, and uh, Commissioner Austin, I do see you. Uh, and if you could provide a report on the uh crime and criminal justice system working group, we'd love to hear you.
But thank you, good evening. We're, we're very much in our embryonic stage is the way I would call it. So this is as much an appeal for those who have an interest in joining this group to. To let me know. I had a good conversation with Commissioner Devoe uh the other day about possible. Candidates to, to reach out to and we'll be kind of vetting those and getting their interest levels. In addition, I've also will be planning very quickly to get out and uh set up an appointment with Jen's. Uh, love work on his presentation as well as identify other uh. Related subject matter experts that I might want to bring forward to the make presentation, so that's kind of. Where I'm now inviting all ideas and all possible uh participants, so.
Thank you, and I think you, you, you raise a very important point, and that is. Uh, any commissioner who wishes to participate in any of the working groups, those that I've. Identified this evening plus now the uh new working group in formation relating to. The development of an industrial policy, uh, please shoot me an email and I'll put you in touch with the right people and put you to work and uh. There is strength in numbers, and it's important that we all collaborate on each of these issues, and so thanks. To each of you for your contributions this evening and on a continuing basis, uh. Uh, Chair and I, and I are deeply grateful to each and every one of you, uh, and I think that may wrap up my piece of it, uh, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, so I think um, we are um, in the part of the agenda where we're opening it up. Um, for any announcements, I do want to start off um with two. Um, so first of all, I want to wish our Vice Chair Lane a happy belated birthday, and of course Thalia's birthday is actually today, so. Both very integral uh parts of this commission, I just want to wish you both um. Uh, you know, a lot of happiness and a lot of blessings, um, so congratulations to you both.
Thanks, Alma, but for my part, let's not remind people. Very kind of you.
Um, the second announcement that I have um was in regards to one of our very own uh commissioners, so. Uh, today it was made public that um, our, our um. Uh, asset management um and previously um superintendent of highways department and our bureau chief now. And of course, uh, continues to do a lot of work, uh, Commissioner Yonin um will officially retire September twenty. Twenty-third, I believe, I think, um, we just want to wish him uh all of the luck in the world. Um, he's been a great asset to this commission, um, has been a, a member since it, since we actually started it. Um, so um, we're very sad to see him, especially uh at the county and of course with the great contributions that he's provided to the commission. Um, and I just wanted to uh congratulate you, John, um, and thank you for all your hard work um in public service. Um, and again, with the great contributions, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just, you know, turn it over to you with any. Uh, words of encouragement that you're going to give us on continuing the hard work um that we've undertaken um here.
I love it, and thank you for your leadership, and absolutely, from day one, seeing you in the audience, Madam Chair assisting, you know, at. That time, you know, Commissioner Garcia, you know, Mark, it, it's just been an incredible experience, just listening to the wisdom. That you all bring, um, you know, for me, the, the gift of really wanting to cheer you on and the many great, you know. Discussions, ideas, things that have been innovative that have come to fruition, it's just been such a privilege to be part of this group, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being who all you are. That's it.
Well, thank you for your hard work, and we will look forward to your continuing contributions post-retirements.
Absolutely.
Because you will, you will always be one of us, retire as you may. You're here for the duration.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you so very much, and all the best to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Verdis has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say, congratulations, John. I remember, I remember when I first came to the city in oh six and John was at CEDAT, I believe, right? And John was as professional as he is right now.
Yeah.
Right now at this moment.
But please, no more, no more.
He would be walking around City Hall, going back and forth between here and Thirty North with his, with his little book and just being professional and just. I was like, who is that guy? And um, so I just want to say congratulations, rest well deserved. Um, I know that wherever you have gone, you have, you know, made a silent, dramatic impact. And hopefully you will continue to have that impact wherever you go next. And uh, we'll see you at the finish line at the top.
That's right. Thank you, thank you. All right, that's it. No more about me. That's it.
Well, John, I know at, at the county, we'll be celebrating you the whole month, so um.
And beyond.
Absolutely, um, so Vice Chair Lane, were there any announcements or any additional um?
I, I, I think we've had at least enough announcements, and uh, we wish John all the best, and otherwise uh. Uh, anything I've had to say, I've already said, and thank you very much, Chair, Chair Anaya.
Great, um, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the September.
I make the motion?
Okay, Commissioner Yonin. Can I get a second, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, I have it. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful uh Labor Day weekend, everyone.
Happy holiday, everybody.